All right. This is the Planning Commission meeting, September fifth, two thousand and twenty four, seven thirty P M. And room one thirty three of the Brookfield Town Hall. First, the roll call. So I'm present, Scott Dale, the Vice Chair. Michael Duvall is here. Courtney Knopf is no longer part of this commission right now. As of September first. Linda Taylor is not, is away. John Mara is away. Our two alternates are present, Mark Lowengart and August Stepneak. Both will be voting members this evening. Onto item two, the approval of minutes of the previous meeting. I think on this one, Michael, you were not-
No, I wasn't.
-present, but the three of the rest of us were. If you've had a chance to review that, let me know if you would like to consider any edits or changes to the minutes.
No, I'm fine with it.
Oh, you were, you weren't, you weren't here?
No, I was reading them online.
Okay. So, so Aga or Mark, would either of you like to make a motion to accept the minutes or otherwise?
I'll make a motion to accept.
I will second.
Okay. Eyes? Okay. Very good, three zero. The second is the P O C D subcommittee that took place on August fifteenth. We're gonna have to table this because there's only two of us that were present for that meeting that are here tonight. All right? So we'll move on from there. Now we're onto new business, and the first one we have is three A. Eight twenty four referral, it's a modification to a driveway easement at Happy Landings. And I believe there's someone here that'd like to speak to this, if you don't mind stepping up to the podium and providing your name and your address.
My name is Ryan Shaw. I live at forty five Whiskaneer currently. I'm looking for a house up at forty five A Whiskaneer, which is behind it. The driveway cuts through Happy Landings, it's an easement. If you notice where it enters from Route twenty five, it kind of has like a hard, hard right, hard left situation. I'm just looking to straighten it out a little bit, so if I can get that twelve foot triangle, that's pretty much a full driveway width shift to the left. It'll make it more approachable.
Just so I'm clear, could you mind pointing that out to me on the back? I think I know, but I don't want to assume.
I have a closer photo. Zoomed in a little bit.
Sure.
There's actually two copies.
That little-
Little tiny triangle there.
That little corner there.
I didn't want to ask for a lot because I know it is a town park, but I'm right there at the end of the corner. Yeah.
So that's here, is that, where is that?
It's right here.
Okay.
So the state is requiring me to enter as far left as possible for line of sight reasons. He doesn't want me going that way. So I have to come in hard right, hard left. If I can come in and clip the turn, that's the full driveway width I'll gain. I mean ideally, I'd like to come straight in, but then I'd be asking for fifty feet and I didn't, you know. We laid it out with garden hose. I can make that work. Twelve feet from you, I'll ask for maybe five feet from the state, maybe they'll give me a little bit, and it'll make the entrance less of a-
Right angle, yeah.
Exactly. Laid out on the ground with what I'm given, it's really tight, like lumber trucks, fire trucks. I'm just worried they're not gonna be able to make that swing. Because I have to enter Route twenty five straight. They don't want me coming in at an angle. So that little triangle makes more of a difference than you would think.
Does anybody have any questions?
I had just finished reading that before we came, so. Kind of pre-understood what was going on, but it was such a small area, I just, I, I was, wasn't sure if that's what, you're just trying to straighten out the driveway instead of making it like the right angle.
Yeah, because they want me far left.
Yeah.
I have to go right then left. Like I said, fifty feet would have made it super easy. Twelve, I can, I can make that work. And I figured I'm just taking as little as possible.
Yeah, it's really not gonna help anybody else.
No, I don't, I don't think that little-
Or hurts, hurts, it's not hurting anybody, that little section.
Yeah. It probably won't be used.
I don't see any problem with it.
The trail has been shifted over, this point is still here there, so.
And this, this is coming from the Board of Selectmen?
The referral is coming from the Board of Selectmen, the easement, just so we're clear, already exists for the driveway. The only rea-, the only reason it's coming back to you at this period of time is because you've processed this twelve foot shift.
Any comments or questions from anybody?
No.
Pretty straightforward.
It's pretty, yeah, it's pretty straightforward.
Okay. If you, do you guys, does anybody wanna make a motion?
All right, I'll make the motion to accept the proposal for that.
I'll second.
Forty five. Eight twenty four referral.
Yeah, so this, so, yeah, just step back for a second, yeah. So this is an eight twenty four referral, so they're asking for whether, well, what's the right wording here? Right, a positive referral to-
Positive referral in response to the eight twenty four referral.
Right.
Okay, I'll make the motion for a positive referral for the eight twenty four.
I'll second.
Okay, eyes? All set?
Pretty simple.
Okay. Second item we have here is the five hundred A and five eighteen Federal Road. P L dash twenty four dash eight Toll Brothers LLC. It's an application for a lot merger. Is there someone here to speak to that?
Good evening. My name is Gary Michael Junior. I'm at Tollgate Brookfield LLC. Our address is seventy West Street, North Great Connecticut. This was, I guess simply procedurally, it's a commission of our approvals, just to mark these lots. I thought it was, I haven't done this in a little while, I thought I'd walk into the town and, when we're ready to file stamping, and, you know, there's just a different process, so that's what made me here this evening. And my hope is that there's, you know, no issues. I don't know which procedurally, it's apparent that I filed a map, I'd like to do that tomorrow.
Okay.
So I just didn't know what happens, again, assuming no issues, if it's stamped, I might love to take the map tonight and fly to Tom Clark.
Can you just say, so the folks, everybody, can you just brief us a little bit on the history and why you're here and how you got to this point? Just, I don't know if everybody's aware.
Yeah, yeah, no, no problem. So we've gone through the process of just obtaining approvals for, I believe, seventy seven townhomes on this site. Before the commission, received necessary approvals. We had some, not issues, but we had to do some things dealing with the W P C A and the sewer. We've been able to work through that. And again, just it's the original stipulation, I believe, in the special permit, as a condition of approval, was to merge these two parcels. So Steve Sullivan, the C C A R engineer, has prepared that map and delivered it to the town, and that's, that's essentially broad strokes.
Okay. Does anybody have any questions regarding this?
Yeah, again, just for clarification, it was two parcels of property. One parcel is vacant land, and the other parcel is existing cottages and two multifamily homes, and again, just here to-
Those cottages staying or they're gonna remove them all, right?
Correct.
Okay. And this has already gone through zoning as well?
Yes.
Yeah.
I believe it's after the zoning condition of approval that he's making references to merge the lot.
Yeah, I apologize, it's just in the special permit, I apologize.
No, no problem, just trying to clarify.
Yeah, and, you know, again, procedurally, this was new to me in terms of having to come before a commission for the merger, but I apologize.
And how many stories higher are these, if you don't mind me asking?
I believe they're three.
I think there's a garage under there, and then it's, there is a building on the crackway.
I don't know.
The happenstance of these buildings in a while.
I can check, I have my file.
Okay. Did this come before planning before, to your knowledge? I don't recall it myself.
It might not have, because it should, I, I don't know how procedurally things were done on this.
Yeah.
No, no, this was, this was, I mean, done in twenty twenty three.
Oh, okay.
Twenty, or twenty twenty two, I believe, no change.
I think it's before twenty one. You know, it was before me, so that's why I'm thinking it was before twenty one. But it might not have, because they weren't subdividing any land. I don't know why, you know, if they, if it was gonna be a condition of the approval if it went to zoning verse. I'm not quite sure what the logic was on this one.
Right, right.
And why that the zoning dictated it. I would want it, and I would think everyone would want it to be one parcel though.
I'm just, I'm just looking at a letter of date in November first of two thousand and twenty two. On October twenty seventh, two thousand and twenty two, the zoning commission approved the following motion regarding the above our food designer view to approve the application. Z two two fifty four, per plan, is submitted on October twentieth, two thousand and twenty two, with the stipulation that five hundred A and five eighteen Federal Road are merged.
Right, okay.
And then again, and I apologize, I can find it, but the special permit itself, the stipulation in bold saying, you know, lots are to be merged, so.
Right.
That is the reason I'm here.
I guess I'll just ask this question, to see, how is this in the best interest of the town of Brookfield to pass this?
It, it was already approved, I'm sorry.
Okay, I'm just, I'm just, just a very general vague question, sorry. It's some, it's what I would ask anybody before.
Yeah, I mean, I think, you know, when we went for approvals, it's in line with the plan of conservation and development, that it's permitted.
Okay.
Is it, is it gonna be, is it gonna be market rate or eight thirty G?
It's gonna be market rate.
Okay. All right. So that's the question before, is this the, the lot merger?
It's a lot.
I don't know if it's a sort of question though, sir, or just a stipulation per approval to merge the lots.
Right.
I, I would find it to be in the best interest of the town though. As far as once a lot is merged, they don't necessarily have the ability to subdivide it the same way ever again. It will have to follow the zoning regulations and the subdivision regulations as they exist from this time forward. To have two lots with the same owner, with the same is, is just for housekeeping reasons, for the assessor's office, for tax even, for all of that, it would be a lot more beneficial. I, I, no staff prefers it.
That, that is a consideration. Okay.
Makes sense, you'd be doing double work all the time.
Well, also, the buildings, it keeps us in compliance with the zoning regulations. A lot of times, it wouldn't be, it would have had to have been merged before they could have even built this. For some reason, this came through and it complied with the zoning regulations without it being merged. It's kind of anomaly.
And to the commissioner, if you would like, I could just provide you, show you just the stipulation, this is the recorded special permit that shows the stipulation.
Okay, no, okay.
That, I just want-
Yeah, thank you, thank you, appreciate it.
Yeah, no problem. So this is, this is the approval, it's been recorded from the zoning commission for a special permit with the stipulation-
And this was twenty two, okay, that's, okay.
Twenty two.
Yeah, okay, thank you.
No problem. Of course, it was at the bottom of my, it was from twenty twenty two.
Always is.
Any further questions from the commission? No?
No.
Any questions?
You say so?
No?
Nope, just, no, I don't have any questions, it seems pretty good.
Okay.
Makes sense to me.
Would anybody like to make a motion? On how to proceed this? Step right up.
I'll, I'll make a motion to approve the merger.
Okay.
I can second.
Five hundred A and five eighteen Federal Road, P L dash two four dash eight. We have a second, any further discussion on this? Who votes, eyes?
Aye.
Aye.
All right, we're good. Okay. Four, yeah. Okay. We are on to three C. Oh. Hold on, one second, let me, let me backtrack for a second. One second, please. No, one second, I just wanna, I didn't consult my cheat sheet. So, let me just make sure, lot merger here. Yeah, approval upon the fact that the chairman will not sign the Myler map until the applicant provides the, an original merger deed, property, properly prepared and signed conveyance tax form. And the Myler and a check to cover the costs of recording both the deed and the Myler in the Brookfield land records.
I believe we have a copy of the deed.
Yep.
Yeah, I just need to-
We just need to put the map number in it once it's done, correct?
Yes.
Yes, I, I-
So the Myler's gonna be filed tomorrow, and, I'll say, I'd be happy to walk down, talk to the man who's gonna provide the-
That would be excellent.
Okay. Right, all right. We've checked all the boxes, thank you. We are on to three C, one eighteen Pocono Road, P L dash two four dash nine. David Vashelli, Jorge George Del Heraldo, application for a lot merger. Is there anyone here to speak to this? We can table this perhaps, or?
I mean, is it required for them, somebody to come speak about this? It's the same thing, lot line revision, it's what a matter of like forty, forty feet or seventy five feet or something.
It's a lot line revision. Yeah.
Seventy five square feet, it's not a- And the one party's just giving it to them right there, there's no-
Yeah.
So I was reading it before.
What are our options here?
You can act on it if you choose to. You do have that, if you think it's clear enough, if you feel like you need more information, you can certainly ask them to come back.
Why don't we, can we just move, change, move the order of our agenda and see if, and see if it can, let's do that. So why don't we, I guess I have to make a motion, right, to move three C below in the order of the agenda. Until after we get through at least four A, all right? Okay, I'll make a motion to adjust the agenda as stated. Is there a second to do so?
I'll second it.
Eyes?
Aye.
Okay. So we'll move on to four, four A, the plan of conservation and development. So. Couple of things going on there with that. I guess first, why don't we start with this, well, first, we'll start that with the fact that Courtney's not part of it anymore. So she's not, she's not part of the P O C D subcommittee. But Linda did join us for that, okay. Second, let's, Aga, would you wanna just, again, provide us an update on the survey, the status of that, please?
So we've received sixty three responses to date. What else? The survey is still active. It's posted on the town of Brookfield website. And then I will also post links on social media for people to continue to respond.
Okay, great. We'll keep that open for, while we're still getting responses, right? Yeah, might, might as well, right? The, another thing that we were working on, the existing conditions, Mark, have you, or either of you?
Yes.
Yeah, can you answer, can you speak to that, maybe where we are? I don't know if you had a chance to look at it more recently.
Yeah, for the existing conditions, you know, we've been, well, I, I can't speak for what other people were doing, I know Courtney was very involved in that, but. One thing that I've been doing is I've been just trying to gather some data to sort of, for, to help us make some assumptions about things, you know, especially, my focus was mainly on infrastructure and transportation. But I'm trying to also look at a few other categories. I can't remember all the categories that I had, I'd have to pull them up on the doc. But right now, I'm just at the stage where I'm just trying to gather like the relevant data. And then once the survey closes, and I think we're, we're closing it at our next meeting, and we're gonna review the results. That'll help us, I think, give, give us an idea on like where we can start out with that. One question I had though is, as far as everything goes with the consultant that we hired, did they make any suggestions?
That's next, yeah.
Okay, so then during the first step of that, they'll also give us an idea on what the most relevant data would be?
So, yeah, that, that'll be, yeah, that was gonna be the next thing I bring up, so, yeah. So the, I did speak to our consultant earlier today, actually. At the Board of Selectmen meeting, which was, what, Tuesday, right? So they were going to make a motion to suggest to us, or urge us, to put together a special committee. And then they, as far as, you know, in their wisdom, I believe, determined that planning should probably best decide that. And so I, so I think we're gonna go forward with something along those lines, and something that I think will hopefully satisfy all, everybody. But this is still a planning endeavor, I guess, right? The end of the day, whatever we, whatever we produce is something that planning, as well as the Board of Selectmen, have to approve. So we're gonna keep the core group that we have right now, which right now is Lindem, Aga, Mark, and myself. That way, planning is, is represented during it. Again, we have to, we have to be part of this process. But we'll also add to it somebody from zoning, somebody from conservation, which we'll define, and then development. And that covers all aspects of it, well, general aspects of the P O C D. So you have the balance of conservation and development, which are actually specified in the, well, it's in the title of the document, so.
Could I bring up one question?
There are a few questions, yes, yes.
Because I'm curious if there's four of you just-
That's, yes, yes.
Okay, keep going there, because I don't know the answer to that, that's why I was wondering if you-
Yeah. And that's one of the questions I, I wanna clarify, that, that, so what we probably, what we could do is, is still do so. But within what this would be, I guess, a special committee, as, you know, as we're assigning here. We could then consider to have two of the members of planning be considered alternates within it. Okay? Therefore, still full participants, and, and really, the, the number of things that you vote on, at least until you get to a certain stage. Yeah, it's the minutes really, for the most part. So, so that's really not, so I think we can move forward, in this way, we've got full, full participation of our planning people. And especially the folks who have already been doing a lot of work for us, right? I mean, we wanna continue doing that, you know? And we can move forward. I think that's a great, I don't know, I think that's a reasonable compromise to, for everybody. So I just wanna make sure that we're not gonna, I'll bear, make sure that we're not gonna have any concerns with that. We then also get, and this will be considered what we, like a core committee. So again, no matter what we do, what would, you know, different things, we've got both the conservation side and the development side to represent, as well as zoning, because we wanna make, make sure that they're in tune with everything. Now, we'll also need to obviously get full input from other boards and commissions within town, that, beyond that. That we have to do, and then we'll try to identify who those folks are and what the proper lines of communication may be. It may not require that they need to be part of every piece of this, but there are, could be some where some of those particular boards may play a very key role in it. And so, but we'll, we'll simply just use them for those key, those pieces rather than the entirety of the document.
So it's the four from the original P O C D subcommittee, one from E D C, one from conservation, and one from zoning, thinking of it as zoning.
Zoning. Zoning, yeah, yeah.
And are we going to a point, or are you gonna, I'm just thinking logistically what I have to do for it to-
Well, I, I need to speak to some individuals, just to make, you know, I need to do that.
Okay.
Just to make sure that we're all aligned.
Okay.
Yeah. So that's, that's the, I think that's the best plan forward. Now, the other, the, we will have a, we're penciling in anyway, having the consultant come for a bit of a kickoff meeting. We're targeting Tuesday, September twenty fourth at seven P M. We're gonna confirm the time and the place, the room, I should say, make sure that that works.
Do you prefer this room setup, or do you prefer?
If it's just going to be the, the members that I've mentioned, we could probably use the other, we can discuss that, I guess, yeah. If we think it needs to involve others, then, yeah, we can adjust if needed. Okay? Yeah, so, yeah, the consultant, then I think from there, that point forward, the goal is to continue with our third Thursday of every month that we've been using. As long as that works for all involved, we'll, we should make sure of that. We know it works for planning, but we might sure it works for everybody. Well, zoning, I know is the second and, and fourth.
I was just trying to think in my head, so unless it's a wonky holiday, but most of the time, we should be fine.
Right, right, and we can also adjust if we need to as well. Yeah. So that's, that's the thoughts, and any questions from anybody on that? Makes sense to you guys? So I think, we're, we're trying to find the right way to move this forward and have every, those represented that need to be represented, and then at the same time, you know, we are going to, other boards and commissions, we're coming, we're gonna be looking for your input and, and be ready. If you're on those boards, you can probably anticipate certain areas where you might get some questions, so, but we'll communicate them directly on that. I think that covers all of that, so. Yeah, the consultant still feels that, yeah, we can, we can meet the timeline that we need to, but we do wanna move forward, we do wanna move forward. All right?
Sounds good.
All right. And, and I'd want us to say, I appreciate the efforts of both Aga and Mark on this process going forward, and also that, that, which Courtney has also, did quite a bit of work on this as well, so. Appreciate everybody's involvement up to this point. All right? What else do we have here? I will make a motion to move up item seven on the agenda. A motion to move item seven up to this part of the agenda. Is there a second?
I'll second.
This is the informal discussion. All eyes?
Aye.
Okay, good. So on here, we have the discussion of the Planning Commission meeting start time. So I don't know why we do these at seven thirty, to be honest with you. I think since I started, that was sort of what we did. But I think we should consider, especially now, it's getting a little darker outside, we could move this to seven P M, which will also, in case we do run into longer meetings, it would allow us all to get back, get back home a little bit earlier. Any thoughts on that? This, this was brought up, you know, last meeting, but we ran a little long, so we pushed it to this time to talk about. Any, how do you feel, Michael?
It wouldn't make any difference to me either way.
Yeah, you're good with that?
Half an hour is not gonna-
Okay. And Mark?
For, for the most part, I think seven should be fine.
Seven should be fine?
Yeah.
Okay. And we're doing the P O C Ds at seven as well, so, okay.
Please, less confusion. Please, less confusion.
Yeah, too, yeah. Yeah, we, some of us have been tripped up on that before, yeah. Okay, I think John, I, I don't want to speak for him, but I know he, I think he's an early riser, so I assume he would appreciate, uh, an earlier times, uh, start time.
And you know Linda did weigh in too.
And Linda did say she, she. So, um, all right. So we can, I guess, logistically, we can approve this, and then we could adjust, uh, our times, well, what's left on our calendar, right?
Correct.
For the end of the year, and then when we do the calendar for twenty twenty-five, we'll.
We'll start it at seven.
We'll go at that point. Uh, any objections on your part?
None whatsoever.
No? Any objections on your part?
No, I just didn't know procedurally, this isn't a, you know, a bylaws or anything really deep and crazy.
This isn't bylaws, this is the annual calendar that gets accepted every year. We're, I mean, if we want to be very strict, we could do a motion to change the annual calendar to amend it, the start time to seven.
I'll, I'll use that language right now, yes.
Just to, to dot our i's and cross our t's and the.
So I'll make a motion to adjust the calendar, uh, from.
The start time.
The start time of the planning commission meetings, uh, regular meetings, uh, each held each month, the beginning, the first Thursday of each month, from seven thirty to seven P M. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Okay.
You go.
Yeah, uh, uh, okay, all eyes?
Aye.
Aye.
All right, and now we'll come in, so next month, this will come into play. We'll start at seven P M.
We'll put a reminder out, put the emails for the agenda, just as a.
Yeah. Okay, yeah, we, yeah, a few reminders, I, I may, I'll probably be the one that's late. All right, so, um, any other, anything else for informal discussion we want to bring up?
I'm just looking at this, uh, email from Greg Timbrowski about, uh, proposed site for future train station. He's thinking about changing it from where it is, the original one.
Uh, which one are you referring to, sorry?
Oh, yeah, I, I know what you're talking about.
Yeah, I was just wondering, where, where do you think it would go? There's already a train station there. It's been there for, uh, you know, eighty years.
So what happened was someone from Westcog emailed him, because if you, you remember how like ten years ago, the state was studying, like extending the new Milford, the train line?
Yeah, they did study.
They, um, they had two potential locations that they listed in that study. One was on Pocono Road, like pretty much across the street from the town hall. And the other site, and, and the other site would have been Four Corners next to the existing one.
Right, the original one, yeah.
And the reason they were considering Pocono Road was because they'd have more parking. But, uh, that, that was something that was brought up in the email, and my thoughts on that were that if, um, if they were to ever extend a line, they would also be putting a station called North Danbury, and that would be on White Turkey Road. So, and that would have a larger parking lot. So if someone who lives in Brookfield, who isn't, um, say they live south of Four Corners and they need to use the train, then they're just gonna go to that lot. Because if you live south of it, you're not gonna drive north to go south on the train, so. I think that it makes sense to just put it in Four Corners next to the existing. That was just a minor thing that was brought up, yeah.
Okay, I was just curious, I was curious where he was thinking of moving it, or, well, like we said, the other side.
Yeah.
All right, that's all. I just was, uh, curious about that.
Yep.
Okay.
That's it.
What's, so, um, let's make a, I'll make a motion to move six correspondents to the next piece of this agenda. I realize I jumped a little bit there. Is there a second to go move to six correspondents?
I'll second.
Eyes?
All right.
Okay, we're all jumping all over the order here. Um, this, this is just a review of the other minutes of the other commissions. Did anybody have anything they want to bring up or any comments on that? There was, um, so we have the August fifth Board of Selectmen, there was, of course, they just had another, uh, a meeting just this past Tuesday that I made, mentioned that, which is how we got the eight twenty-four referral from them. Oh, so, um, we should mention that, um, uh, of course, they do have, uh, the, uh, hearing for the zoning commission. Does have a hearing a week from tonight, uh, related to the moratorium for multifamily applications, and that's, uh, they're moving, that's moved, they've moved that to the high school, because that, right? Because they're anticipating a bigger crowd than this room can, can take.
And that's the last hearing, so.
Right. Okay. Uh, other than that, does anybody have anything you want to, uh, bring up for discussion or note, uh, because it's relevant to what we do or anything else? If not, you can move on.
Not really.
Nope.
Nope.
Okay. All right, so we have this, uh, remaining open item here, which is three C. We'll move on to three, unless anybody has something they want to bring up. All right, so three C, uh, our options here are, could you, we could either, what, table it or?
You can table it, you could, you can open the application and review it, see if you have any questions, and ask the applicant to come back. It looks like it's a property swap.
Okay. Yeah.
I think it's just a section of the lot line they're just moving over, that's all.
It's a lot line.
And it's just giving it to the neighbor for a dollar, so. Disputed. Pretty straightforward.
Do we feel we're in a position to act on this?
Yeah, I mean, I don't have any questions about it, so.
Okay.
This is this one here, I believe. It's gonna be a total of forty-four square feet.
No big deal.
I believe it's just so they can be zoning compliant for something, if I remember correctly.
Right, it's just, uh.
Are there any questions that you would have if you were reviewing this proposal?
I think that seems pretty straightforward.
Okay.
I was reading this earlier.
Uh, anything, does anybody want to bring anything up or any note of anything or discuss anything?
I feel like it's like a house, it's a housekeeping issue.
Mm-hmm.
So, maybe they want to do a fence or something down the road.
Okay. Hey, what do you guys, what do you guys think? Similar?
Hmm, it's straightforward. It would just make a motion to approve it.
Yeah? Okay, you want to make a motion?
All right, I'll make a, an appro, uh, a motion to approve application PL twenty-four dash nine. Property swap, one eighteen Pocono Road.
I'll second.
Any further discussion? No? All eyes?
Aye.
Aye.
All right, we're good. I don't think we have any tabled items. Linda's not here. Who wants to play the role of Linda?
I'll make the motion to adjourn.
Yeah?
The Myler.
The Myler. It, it doesn't matter if it's signed during, when it's during the meeting or.
Oh, it doesn't have to be during, sorry, no, were you waiting for that? I'm sorry.
No, I'm asking you.
I'm sorry, it wasn't signed if I was.
Oh, no, no, we didn't mean, yeah, no, no.
I'm sorry, I interrupted.
No, I hope you, okay.
You are a captive audience.
No, so we should, okay, we should be fine then. Uh, all right, um, so, uh, anything else? No, right, we're good.
Nope, I made a motion to adjourn.
To adjourn, is there a second?
I'll second.
Everybody, all right?
We're good.
Great, okay.
Lose it.
Thank you, everybody. Thank you for your participation.